Call this meeting the order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, July 9th, 2019. And we're going to move to the consent agenda. Since Melanie is not here, I will read the consent agenda. I'm only going to do it this once.
Thank you.
Approval of payroll, June 14th and June 28th, 2019. Approval of minutes, June 11th. Approval of claims, June 13th, June 20th, June 28th, and July 3rd, 2019. Waits and measures monthly report from May 16th and June 15th in 2019 is filed. And we'll move right into, I guess we can...
Memorial Opera House.
Yeah, Memorial Opera House, artistic services agreements. I'll turn that over to Commissioner Blaney.
There actually aren't any. Well, the production contracts, we've got four productions for the 2020 season, stage craft theatrical agreement for Mamma Mia, venue rental agreement for Brightside Music LLC.
And that is the consent agenda. Open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. We're now going to get into announcements. We have some citizens' appointments to the following boards. The first board that is up for an appointment would be Parks and Recreation for Porter County. This is a partial appointment. This person would be filling a position that was vacated some time back. And this person will also have to have a political affiliation as a Republican because that is the person that left. So we would replace it with a Republican. That's statutorily and how it works. So I'm going to open up the floor for the appointment for the Porter County Parks and Recreation Board. Oh, okay. I'll go ahead and make it. It's Brian Wasserman is the appointment. I make a motion, second. We have a motion of second for Brian Wasserman to be the appointment to the Porter County Parks Department Board from the Board of Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. So Brian is now on the Board of Parks and Recreation. And next, we have an appointment for the Porter County Airport Authority. And we got one, paper clip, paper clips weren't cooperating with me. We have one application that came in for the Airport Board, and the application is for Mark Taylor. And Mark is currently a Board member, and so he's looking to be reappointed by this Board. Motion to approve. We have a motion, and I'll second, motion of second for Mark Taylor to become reappointed to the Airport Authority Board for the Porter County Airport. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. So we have that board position filled as well. Okay, on to some other announcements. I know we've been talking over the last several months, we've been talking a lot about ramping up and the things that are happening out at the Porter County Expo Center that is now open. It's been operating now for over a month. Good things, a lot of good feedback. And to make sure that, to reinforce the feedback that we're getting, the Expo Center was, is being awarded Thursday from the Valparaiso Chamber of Commerce Community Improvement Award for the Porter County Expo. So we're very excited. We'll be there on Thursday at the Expo Center. We're hosting it. And we'll be accepting this award on behalf of Porter County Government. And I think if everybody remembers, last year, the county also won an award for the front plaza and what we did out here out front. So two in a row, and we'll see if we can keep winning some awards. We still have a lot of work to do, but I think it's nice to be recognized, and it's nice, especially as a government, to be recognized by your chamber and your community of things that you're doing above and beyond. And so we'll be accepting that award with great honor on Thursday. So I wanted to make that announcement as well, too. And Lori Daly, the Expo Director, will be there and celebrating with us. So, thank you. The last thing we have on the announcement is something that, when I got the letter, I wanted to, I don't know, just sort of talk about it a little bit. I think this is, again, more of our onward approach in county government and working with different departments of county government, whether they're quasi-boards or whether they're separate boards. This here is a, it's basically a letter of appreciation sent by the Porter County Public Library System to Don Welson and the IT staff. Don is the head of our Internet, IT department for the county and staff for assisting them to utilize the county's existing phone system. After the Commissioners approved the plan, the library acquired new handsets and associated licenses and expects a cost savings of over $100,000 over the next five years. Now, that is, that is just coming from people talking to each other and utilizing the expansive network and the pricing and all the things that come with government. And in the past, a lot of different departments tried to work autonomously and tried to get those things done separately. And I know there's been, we've had some new Board members that we've appointed on the library board that are now coming to the county and talking to us, and it's the ways that we can leverage some of the things that we do to help them save money so we can use it for more things for the people that use the library. I mean, that's where this money is going to go back. It's going to go back to the end user. And so if we can continue to keep mining and continue to do things like this and create cost savings on the day-to-day things, that gives our library board or any other board a little bit more runway to go do more things that can serve the public. So I wanted to share this letter from the library board. I think it's sort of a big deal for me. Again, it's cooperation, it's working together, it's not getting, you know, down in the weeds and fighting over stupid things. This is about the greater good and trying to put things ahead and working together. And that's, I think, been our charge from up here for the last three years, is we just want everybody working together and respecting each other, whether you're a department of county government or whether you're part of a, however, a quasi-board, whatever, we're going to help and we're going to try and leverage and help you be the best department that you can be. So I just was tickled about this announcement, and I wanted to share it with the public. So any comments from the Commissioners?
Just that the new library director and the board have really stepped up and been great to work with, and these kind of savings are allowing the library to go through some changes that are making them more user-friendly and viable. The old standard of just going in and checking out a book is not the way people use information anymore, get information. So their online stuff's improving, their capabilities for computers are just going through the roof. It's good stuff, and hopefully this money savings will help them further that.
I think there was also something in the paper here recently, too, just the last couple of days, where they're discussing or made the decision to waive the late fees for penalties for books. And I think that, once again, is a forward-looking movement, and it's basically saying, we don't want to penalize you to come and take books out. And so, again, with things like this, this allows us to make other decisions on the other end that, you know, maybe if we were losing a little bit of money here, we can go out and make these decisions and hopefully bring more people in under the tent.
Keeping books out of the hands of the kids who need it and the mom.
Exactly. So a lot of good things going on. It's, we're very fortunate in Porter County to have a very vibrant library system, and now it's just...
And Kevin Paser is...
And Kevin Paser from the museum is on that board, is one of the latest members, I think, that was appointed by the Council. And so, Kevin, did you want to add anything or just...
It's a great group, and if you haven't had time to go to any one of the branches, do take the time to do it. It's a new day.
You mean, before they go to the library or the Ponco Museum?
You can always stop by the museum. It's a little hot, but I didn't talk to Ray about that.
Okay, he's right here. I'm taking the air conditioning ain't working over there, so...
We don't have it.
Oh, that's right, yeah. When you haven't had for 150 years either, so... But thank you, Kevin. So I have one other announcement. I saw Dave Bagnone walked in. David, you want to come forward and give us a little bit of an announcement on what's going on with the fair? We're in our announcements part of the meeting, so we might as well get you covered and get you on your way. David is the head honcho out at the Porter County Fair here, so please have a seat and whatever you want to do, David. Good morning.
Good morning. So it's an exciting time. I had a meeting, I was at the Rotary yesterday, and I told that we booked Luke Combs this year. And last year, we had an offer in for Luke Combs, and our initial offer was $40,000, and that wasn't enough, and so we went to 75, and they passed on it. And so we booked him this year, and because of contractual obligations, we weren't, we're not able to tell you how much we paid this year, but I will tell you that he's getting all the dates he wants next year for $1 million. So we sold that show out in 12 minutes, and it's one of the most humbling events that's ever happened in my life. It's really, you know, I've been doing this for a long time, and I'm excited to bring Luke Combs to the Porter County Fair.
Timing's everything.
It is.
Because he's at the top of everything right now.
And we have Doug Sheen Farmer coming this year as well. She was one of America's Got Talent, two years ago, and she came in second this year on the Best of the Best, where the magician beat her out, Sean Lynn or whatever his name was. And we have a Christian night, and we have an Oldies Country Night with Sawyer Brown and Diamond Rio. But actually, the reason I really wanted to come here is I wanted to tell you guys how much we appreciate the relationship that the county has developed with the Porter County Ag Society. And one of your ambassadors, Lori Daly, has certainly been a big part of the glue to be able to make it happen. And I just wanted to go over a few things that we've done in the past couple of years. You replaced the sound guy, Neil, lack of better words, and we put a new sound system in, and we used a guy out of Springfield, Illinois, and it's pretty much self-contained now. We really don't need any maintenance. I had him come over this year to go through a thing or two, and we found a couple of little problems that we're having fix, but we bore the cost of that and has an upright, you know, good system going. And so we're excited about that. But the thing that, probably one of the most exciting things is we've rearranged the entire fairgrounds this year. We, Lonnie Steele had the idea that we needed to spread people out and send the free-on-ground stuff out to the south parking lot. Well, it was a good idea if we had 250,000 people coming to the fair, but we don't have 250,000 people. We have about 150,000 people. So we've decided to pull that in and use that valuable parking space for parking cars. And so where that big tent was in the middle, the Park Place Pavilion, we're moving that over to the north, straight out from East Expo. And that's where our entertainment is, and we booked a lot of tribute bands in there this year. It's going to be more exciting than ever. And so in that area between the 4-H Building and the Camel Barn, it's going to be all of our live, our free-on-ground acts, so dog, pig racing, and several other things. And then we have a Pirates of the Caribbean Act coming in that, or High Wire Act, that are really, really exciting. So we think that that will really, will entice people to stay in that area. And in regards to that, the Health Department, we have a great relationship with the Health Department, too. And last year was the second year that one of our vendors got written up because of poor practices. They left some chicken out in the open, and we can't tolerate that because if one vendor gets people sick, it isn't just that one vendor. It's, oh, I got sick at the Porter County Fair, I'm not coming there. So he was our second-largest vendor in revenue, and we kicked him out because we can't deal with that. You know, we're a quality organization, and we care about the public, and we appreciate the public coming to our place. So with respect to that, we've changed the food area and made a new food court where we blacktopped, and so it's going to keep people a little tighter. And we had some food vendors in front of the horse barn. They did not have sewer hookup. That's why we moved them to this area, so we will not have food vendors in front of that horse barn where there were no sewer hookups. And, you know, we're excited about that. Last year, which this number staggered me, and I asked the people at Rotary yesterday to give me a guess. So does anybody have an idea of how many dollars in food our food vendors sell for that 10 days?
All together?
Yeah, total.
Two million?
One million. One million dollars. Somebody at Rotary guessed 20,000. Anyway, a million dollars. And so one of the things that was sorely needed out there is AT&amp;T, as what most vendors use for their credit card processing, the AT&amp;T signal isn't very good out there. So we put in, with NITCO, we put in Wi-Fi, fiber optic Wi-Fi, and the Ag Society, we spent about $70,000 in doing so. And we believe that that is going to have a ripple effect with us. We're hoping that we can increase our revenue from the food vendors 20% this year. So we've, you know, we've put in Wi-Fi, we've put in blacktop, we've put in 15 camping spaces last year, we just put in new lights in the horse barn, and all these things, you know, we're doing because of our mutual relationship with the Porter County Commissioners and the county. We're happy to be there, and we appreciate the communication, and we appreciate the nearly $4 million that you spent on the Expo and Expo East. I've heard no negative comments about, I mean, anybody can't make a negative comment about that because it's a beautiful, beautiful facility. One thing on my agenda is, the days of Carl Hefner, they thought they were going to race ponies out there. Well, the next pony that races out there will be the first one that raced there. So we took that little bank on the north end that was sort of high, and we had Bud Martin shave it down for us this year. And our thoughts are, with the county's permission, next year, we'd like to put full hookup camping in that area. And we, you know, obviously would fund that as well, but, you know, certainly it's not our property, and we would like to put that on the table for you guys to think about and whether or not that's something that is in your plan, if you'd like...
What I would recommend, David, is getting a meeting together with Bob Thompson and Mike Novotny, county engineer, and whatever you guys are talking about. Just sit down with them and work through the process like we all have to do. I would rather have our technical people look at it first to make sure we're not doing anything...
Sure.
...that would harm us in the future, but I think we're open to it.
Absolutely. So it's pretty much what I had to, had to discuss, and do you guys have any questions of me?
No, I just want to thank you for working together with us, and, you know, I said at the opening thing, when all the rain was going on and we were trying to mow out there, and we started getting behind very quickly, it was just amazing how the agricultural community and the fair people just stepped up and showed up, and they were there, like, what do you want us to do? And it's just, it's just a lot different than four years ago, that's all I'll say. A lot different, and I think, I think a lot of that is attributed to you as well.
Well, thank you. I, you know, with one of my jobs, variety attractions, I get to go around and see a bunch of fairs throughout the country. And, you know, and we've gotten a fair amount of pushback from these vendors because they think that this space is their space forever. And we're not moving those people to make them mad, we're moving them to make the whole picture better, and, you know, and we have to change. And a lot of these guys at these fairs in Illinois and, you know, and wherever, they, you know, we put that little wagon over there because we've been up for the last 20 years. Well, we're not going to do that at the Porter County Fair, so we're excited about moving forward. And, you know, and I'm very fortunate as a manager to have a board behind me that, one day Lonnie Steele told me, he said, you know, I want you to take this to the board because they won't tell you no. And that isn't the truth. When I take something to the board, I have all of my, my plan together and reasons why we should do it. And if I don't think that it's a good thing for the fair or the county, I don't take it to them. And so we try to make good decisions, and they've really invested in me and let me run with the game, and I appreciate it, I love it. I, you know, there's times, like this past week, I just think to myself, why do I love the Porter County Fair? Because, you know, I just, this morning, I downloaded emails, and, oh, anyway.
It's a great fair.
It's a great fair. We're very blessed in Porter County to have the fair that we do.
We do.
And to have the volunteer community that's involved in it, at the level that they are. I mean, it's, it's really amazing that you see the amount of time and effort that's given for this, for this 10-day affair, so thank you, David.
Well, thank you for letting me come.
Good luck out there, I'm sure I'll be seeing you.
And if you guys need anything, don't hesitate to give us a call. We're happy to, you know, it's easier to make love than more, so we're much, much appreciative of everything, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, David. Thank you. Next up, we're going to move into Commissioners business here. Next up on the agenda is we have a quote from a company called MuniCode Service for the recodification and restatement of the county codes. Scott, you want to give us a little bit of an update on that, sort of give us a little history as to where we're at?
Yeah, I think it's been about since the late 90s, since we've gone through and looked at all of our code, here's our local code, and made sure we didn't have any issues with state law changes and things of that nature, federal law changes. So this would be a, this would take about a year's process to go through what we currently have, and then also the things that have been added over the last couple of years. And then ultimately, we would restate our code, be it an opportunity to remove and tweak things that need to be at this point, and then also would allow it to kind of mesh with what Mr. Ellis is working on with the website, that this would, at the end of this, MuniCode would be holding the, or it would be a link to be able to get to our county code in a more efficient manner and kind of take it off of our website. It's holding it now, would still be on our website as a link, but it wouldn't be something that we would be managing in-house and then also allow for the process that as we continue to pass ordinances, that they are updated either monthly or quarterly and then available online. And it also gets us away from necessarily having to print books and, as long as the code is accurate online, then we lose a lot of the administrative behind-the-scenes of people attempting to find parts of our county code. So this would take about 12, this is about a 12-month process that we'd start now and hope to finish next year. It's pretty involved, but like I said, I think the last time this was done was '97.
And I think the company that did it for us in '97 is not in business anymore?
No, this is the same, it's the same. Yeah, you're thinking of the Plan Code.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
What was the, the cost of their quote?
$14,300.
And I think last, if you recall, the last meeting, last board, we approved a contract for, we're also doing training for our Plan Commission members, too, because we've not done any retraining in a long time. We have a lot of new members on board this year, so we wanted to give them a good start with some training. And so this is now, we're sort of moving in on the Plan Commission, and a lot of the things that have not been paid attention to for quite some time, we're now circling back and looking at that and cleaning a lot of things up and getting it, like Scott said, getting it a lot more current with today's codes and...
Well, and to give an idea, our code, I think everyone forgets how big it is. Our local code is 565 pages currently, double column with 11 font. So there's quite a bit to go through to get us to, and that's why it's going to take this long, and that's obviously reflected in the price, but it needs to be gone through to get to where we need to be.
Yep, I agree.
So with that, I'll open up the floor to the, to the board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for a quote from MuniCode Service for the recodification and restatement of the county codes for the Plan Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move into payoffs. Bear with us here, we'll try to get through these here quick. First one is for Expo Center. We're working through the last payments and working on some retainage and other things. First, we have EC Babila, who is the roofer. This is pay app two, an amount of $98,593.85, with a remaining balance of $20,664.60. I'll open it up to the fourth.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second, pay app two for EC Babila. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up is Keel Mechanical, pay app number five, in the amount of $12,820.25, with a remaining balance of $5,047.60. That's for plumbing.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for Keel Mechanical, pay app number five. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up is Continental Electric, pay app number nine, in the amount of $16,293.83, a remaining balance of $41,341.80. We have a motion of second for Continental Electric, pay app number nine. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up is Midwest Tile and Interiors, that's flooring, and this is change order number two, in the amount of $1,005, and this is to provide flooring for the bride's room, which was done at the end at the last minute. And I'll throw that out to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for Midwest Tile and Interiors, change order number two, in the amount of $1,005. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Pangier Corp., change order number three, in the amount of $5,720, and this is miscellaneous time and material work. A lot of that was the framing and a lot of the work that went into the bride's room, again, that we did at the tail end of the project, and Pangier did most of that work there, so that's what that change order is for.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for Pangier Corp., change order number three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then Pangier, we have a change order number four, in the amount of $112, and this is to provide door seals and additional signage and kick plates, and this was some of the older doors that were in the building that we made look new again, and that was something that was not included in the scope. Once we started getting a lot of nice new stuff next to these old doors, they didn't look real good, so we switched it out real quick for $112. Open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for change order number four, for Pangier Corp., in the amount of $112. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. So we're done with Expo for this month. I didn't mean it that way.
Yeah, you did.
North County Annex renovation, we got some payoffs. Mechanical Concepts, this is pay app number one, in the amount of $40,071, with a remaining balance of $1,252,829.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for Mechanical Concepts, pay app number one, in the amount of $40,071. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Pay app number one for Circle R Electric, in the amount of $97,791.57.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for Circle R Electric, pay app number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Zilkowski Construction, pay app number five, in the amount of $77,092.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion of second for Zilkowski, pay app number five. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Yeah, Zilkowski, pay app number six, in the amount of $138,080.60.
Motion to approve.
Motion of second for Zilkowski Construction, this is pay application number six. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then last is Pangier Corp., change order number one, in the amount of $8,941, and this is to provide doored hardware modifications, replace doors, frames, and electric strikes on doors. Once we started getting into the, as you recall, this building is a renovation of an existing courtroom, and so as we've tore into the building, and obviously we found some surprises, and some of the, one of this surprise had to do with a lot of the control access points for doors and things, and so we, we decided to modify rather than replace, and that's what this change order is for. what this change order is for.
Motion to approve.
Second. A motion and second for Pangier, change order number one, to provide door hardware modifications, replace door frames and electric strikes on doors. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. So, we're done with the payouts. So, now we're going to move into Memorial Opera House. Scott McDonald, director, please come forward. Morning, Scott.
Morning.
What you got?
Couple introductions, first of all. I want to make sure to introduce two of our summer interns that we have. We have Andrea Vance, who was back there. She is a incoming sophomore from Manchester University, and she is actually with us on a scholarship from Manchester for the summer. She helped construct our new bar upstairs, she's running sound for Mama Mia, she has been, she's costuming our children's theater production of Peter Pan. She is kind of an every woman for everything, all things theater type related, and we're thrilled to have her onboard. We also have Rising Junior Graham Botoff from DePaul. He interned for us last summer, he's back again this year for us.
He's a familiar.
Yeah, and he is working backstage with Mama Mia, and also helping stretch out with several projects around the Opera House, so we're thrilled to have him.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks, Ma.
And what else you got here? Looks like you got a request.
Yes, so, I actually sent this appropriation down for, request for, an additional to the appropriation for this month's council meeting. It got put on last month's council meeting, so it's already been handled.
We still need to do this, though.
I think so.
I think so. Scott's shaking his head, yes.
But the Memorial Opera House Foundation has committed to giving direct support for royalties, production costs, marketing costs, all of that for the Opera House, so we're thrilled to kind of get those things kicked in gear. And this is so that we can pay for the royalties for next year, so we can use the ticket sales to continue to bring qualified staff onboard for the shows, to heighten our production quality, and continue to offer what we're offering, so.
Very appreciative of the foundation.
Very.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for request for additional appropriation of Fund 949-15, in the amount of twenty thousand dollars to account 3760 royalties. And this is a, the Memorial Opera House Foundation is giving the Memorial Opera House the funds and direct support to help pay for the 2020 production rights. And as Scott said, these are monies that will be paid for next year licensing, so throw it to the board.
I think we have a motion.
Oh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks.
Have a great week.
Thank you.
Is Mama Mia this weekend?
Yeah, we open up, we have our soft opening on Thursday, and I think we have a pretty full house for that, and we are sold out, all of our nine performances. We added two performances, and I think we have like eighty tickets left for the two Thursday performances that we added. Seventy-five now.
There's only...
Since I walked up here. We're really, really excited, so it's going to be a great show.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Walking away down there, looks good, and welcome interns.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we got EMA. Looks like Lance is here instead of Mark.
Yeah, I think his name was on the invoice, that's one of the...
Yeah, that's right. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, Lance. So, what do you got here?
This is some software that we need for programming existing Motorola radios that we already had, so this would allow us to bring them up to the newest version of software, and then be able to program those radios, just an initial programming, but also when we get on scenes at times, we may have to reprogram radios on the fly. And several of our volunteers are radio programmers, and so rather than send those radios out and paying a company to do it, we're able to do it ourselves. This is a three-year subscription, so that's spread out over three years, we wouldn't need an upgrade on that.
What's the dollar amount on that again?
Five, five ninety-one.
Okay, five hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Yes, sir.
Yep. Throw it to the board, any questions of Lance?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the Motorola Solutions software to reprogram the EMA Motorola radios. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're good. Thank you, Lance, be safe out there. Auditor, Vicky Urbanic, and she has an ordinance...
Yeah, the ordinance basically is a result of a state law change that requiring her to collect a ten dollar fee for endorsing the real estate conveyance documents. I think it was five?
Yes.
And so, the statute changed, so we're kind of handcuffed into making this change to match the state law.
We really have no choice. We must increase the fee to ten dollars, and you must pass an ordinance.
Do I have to do the two reading thing, or...
Yes.
So, we, this is first reading?
Yes.
Why do they even ask what they're... We're being official.
I'm not sure we're asked.
Yeah, we were. Getting used to that. So, what we're going to do here is we're going to pause the commissioners' meeting here and open up a public hearing, and what we're going to do is we're going to give three opportunities to speak in favor, and three opportunities to speak against this ordinance, and then we'll shut down the public meeting, and then we'll reopen the commissioners' meeting, and hopefully take action one way or the other. I don't think we have a choice here, but I just still needed to say that. So, with that said, I'd like to give anybody, the first call, anybody to come forward to speak against this ordinance. Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? I'm already here. Third and final call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak against this ordinance? First call, anybody wishing to come forward in speaking in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody wishing to come forward to speak in favor of this ordinance? And with that, the public hearing is now closed, and I'll open it up to the board for action.
And just for everyone's knowledge, this money, the fee, has to go to the county plat map fund for use in developing and maintaining the plat books, so that's, not only is it, how much we have to charge, but where it has to go and what it has to be spent on.
But the state dictated what that amount would be?
Correct.
Did they give a reason why they felt it necessary to double it?
Not that I heard of, no.
It sounds like the state, or your legislature. And there's already a fund for this?
Yes.
There's a fund in place, okay.
Motion to approve the ordinance on first reading.
Second. We have a motion and second on first reading for an ordinance reestablishing the fee for real property conveyance documents endorsed by the auditor of Porter County. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Second reading will be on the next agenda.
Correct, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vicky.
Oh, look, Expo's not done.
Expo, wow. Communication Company. This is... Good morning.
Good morning.
So, you got, what do you got here?
So, this is the agreement. It's a yearly contract, they inspect the fire sprinkler systems, this is going forward. It was inspected under the project last month, so this is above and beyond that.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for an agreement to provide alarm service testing for the fire alarm system, fire sprinkler system, and portable fire extinguishers for the Expo Center in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars annually. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Lori.
I have a couple of other things, if that's okay.
Okay.
I don't know if y'all, I think you all know Debbie Garner has retired. Her last day is this Friday.
She cuts a ribbon and retires.
She did.
Going out with a...
Going out with a bang.
Yeah, that's all she wanted to do, so she's done. So, her last day is this Friday. I was able to hire an assistant director, I brought her with me to introduce her to everybody. Her name is Tammy Mangold, she started yesterday, so she's still with me, that's a good thing.
Welcome, Tammy.
Twenty-four hours.
Little crazy week for her to start, but we needed to get her in.
Hey, jumped in with...
Right, I agree. The other thing Kurt brought to my attention is, we should have brought this up when David was up here, but huge appreciation to the Ag Society. They donated a ten-day booth to the election board. They're going to bring out their new machines and show the public how to work, how they work.
Very smart, very smart.
So, it's a win-win for everybody.
That's awesome.
So, I think they're set up in the second building, so anybody that hasn't been able to mess with them yet, that'll be a great opportunity.
Awesome idea. Great, thanks, Lori.
Thanks.
Ray Lloyd. How's Ray doing?
Doing good, how are you guys doing?
Good. So, you got an agreement here with Dude Solutions, huh? Yeah, with Dude Solutions. I think Amy, Amy was waiting for me to say that, I could just tell.
This is a software for our work order system. I think it'll be more effective for our technicians to accept work orders and complete them, and us to handle more accountability to them, and also give us data for our assets in our building. For instance, HVAC systems, we can actually put, you know, how much money are we putting into the system? We can make educated guesses that are more sound than just guessing.
This is something that we were moving towards in the beginning, and it's apartments three years old, and this is the next step, and this is, this is a good move, this is... We'll have data, and we, like you said, we can start, we have a piece of equipment that keeps breaking over and over and over, we have, we have now data that we can go back and pull up, and it just makes, it helps you make better informed decisions...
Yes.
...with your equipment and everything else. It's just good data, so I'm all for this.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and second for Dude Solutions, an operations management software agreement in the amount of one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars for six months. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And then we have the Porter County boot policy.
Yeah, we'd like to increase that, we worked with Rick Sexton on the highway department, and we'd like to increase it to two hundred dollars for the boots, and then for the custodians for eighty dollars for the custodians.
And where are they now?
I don't think there is anything written for the custodians.
Okay, so we're going to formalize this finally. Okay.
Well, for the custodians, but for the highway facilities, I think we are a one...
One seventy-five, I would think.
One fifty, one seventy-five? All right, so this is two hundred dollars for highway facilities every eighteen months, and custodians, it's eighty dollars every eighteen months.
Correct.
And then they have to beat the water...
Slipper efficiency.
The electric and slippery surfaces, and they must be worn while they're at work.
Yes, I know a lot of people are probably thinking out there, a boot policy, but this really came out of the safety meetings and the discussions that we've been having with our carriers who have been, who are here today, and who have been involved in these meetings on a day-to-day, and we're really trying to manage our workman comp for the county too, because now we're self-funded, and we're already starting to see a lot of savings there as well too, but we need to get our guys in the right gear, and that's what this is all about, so, and we've had a lot of discussions the last year about boots, but I'm glad to see we're formalizing it, now we have a direction to go, so, because we have a lot of guys out there that are working in stuff.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and second for approval for the new Porter County government boot policy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Yep. Highway Department, Rich Sexton.
Morning, Rich.
Morning, how you guys doing?
Good. Oh, there's someone coming, I could see him in the bright yellow.
I was hiding that green.
So, what do you got here, guys? I think we know, but I'll let you guys explain.
Yeah, these are the memorandum of understanding between us and the city of Alpo and the town of Chesterton. We, as we all know, we bought the chip and seal equipment last year. We had a sit-down meeting earlier this spring, talking, and we talked to a lot of the local superintendents of the street departments, and they were interested in chip and seal, and when we had our meeting, they talked about, we talked about working with them to chip and seal some of the lower volume roads, and these are just covering like, we're going to do about four roads totaling two miles worth of work for them, and this is just covering us on the deal.
Are these the roads that we were already chip and sealing? We were, our portion, and these are the portions going in, whether it's Chesterton or Alpo. Yeah, so to be, so to be clear, so that frankly the articles get written properly. Alpo and Chesterton aren't adding chip and seal where they weren't before.
Correct.
What we have done is that in the places where the county is moving into, or chip and sealing a road that terminates either at the Alpo limit or the Chesterton limit, instead of stopping, we're going to continue to make, to finish the road, and then these are the agreements that will, that will have us reimbursed from either Chesterton or Alpo, and the underlying financials of it is that it's very cost prohibitive for, say, the city of Chesterton to try to get...
A half a mile.
Looks like they're at, what?
Five hundred feet.
Yes, less than five thousand feet of chip and seal done, considering what we were trying to do, you know, a miles of it, it was difficult for us to be, to get that done, considering some of our southern counties are doing hundreds of miles of chip and seal. So, this is a good financial for them, and it's good for us, and it's good for everyone involved that are traveling the roads, and these individual agreements that will be approved here and then approved at both cities, basically takes into account the time, material, and the labor, and a little bit of wear and tear, and so everybody's getting the use of all the bit-out limestone and things like that that we've utilized, so it's really a win-win for everyone involved. They wouldn't be able to find somebody to do five hundred feet.
No, no. It would be, they would just have to pave it, and that's it, and we're, what we can do five hundred feet for is way under what they can have it paved for all day long, because it needed full reconstruction.
Yeah, so once again, we can grind, we can grind the whole road down to nothing, and then we can add stone back to build that base, right? Because that's what we're trying to do here by chip and seal, we're trying to increase the base of our roads, because right now, a lot of our bases in our roads are half of what they should be, so it'd be foolish to go over and pave over roads that only have six inches of stone underneath them. So, this is part of the process, and by what you said is, in doing these, we'll be able to take these roads down to the subbase and rebuild them back up with chip and seal, which is, so then I think, once we get that subbase, if the city or the town wants to come in a year or two from now and pave it, they have, they have more base now that they can do it on the next iteration of the maintenance of the road, so, and it's also really good to be working with the cities and towns, and working with...
They're really good with chip and...
Yeah, it's good stuff.
We're all Porter County residents.
And so, some dollar amounts, Chesterton's thirty-eight thousand, and Alpo's like forty-eight thousand, so that, Alpo looks like, oh...
They're rated about a mile.
Mile.
And then so is the town of Chesterton's about a mile too, so...
Yeah. Have other municipalities reached out for this same type of agreement?
When we had our meeting, every town in the county responded back to it, except for the town, the city of Portage, so, or if they couldn't make it, they couldn't make it, but they at least responded back, so I meant, we're more than happy to work with them if they want to talk too. So, we plan on October 11th actually having another same style meeting before winter, and showing winter operations as well, so we can make sure everything's good, yeah.
Starts and stops on snowfling.
Yeah.
I'm just very glad to see that we're all talking.
Oh yeah.
And that's, that's, that's good.
We talk pretty much weekly, so it's good.
Good, good, good.
Do we need to do this?
It's a great program.
Yeah.
We can do them together. We can do them together?
Yeah.
Motion to approve memorandum of understanding between the Porter County Highway Department and the city of Alpo, as well as between the Porter County Highway Department and the town of Chesterton.
A second. We have a motion and a second for two memorandum of understandings between Porter County Highway Department, the city of Alpo, and the town of Chesterton for performing minor roadway construction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Thanks, guys.
I just wanted to tell you guys, we had Levy Laboratories right here by the old Anco Building come out and do some lightweight deflectometer where they drop a weight, and it tells you how compacted our base is. We're well above even any kind of standard. We're, so our roads are gonna be so much better, and I will compare them. If they ever want to argue it, we'll go out and compare them and show them the results, so.
Well, while you were on vacation, I went out on the road that had a lot of bayses on it. What was that road, 500?
250.
250. And that's somewhere family out there, it's a pretty beat-up road, but they were in there chipping sealin' it. It turned out really nice. I mean, you could see where the aggregate is, and we're putting, no, I was very pleased. And we're smelling the quality.
Yeah, they're, they're very smooth, so.
Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Good, we'll see y'all fair.
Yeah.
Yeah. How you guys doing?
Good.
Good.
Excellent.
Okay.
May I make a request?
Yeah.
Can I introduce somebody, a new team member here, please?
You can, go ahead.
Chris? I'd like to introduce Chris D. Antonio. Chris recently started with our team in the upstairs, and Chris is our new project manager for the highway engineering side. Chris brings a wealth of knowledge to the group upstairs for construction practices and materials, and he is off and running on all of our bridge projects, so just wanted to introduce Chris.
It's like they're doing good on those bridges up there, right off of 700. I went by there last night, they're, they're getting after it. Good. Okay, first up, we have to make an appointment to the Kankakee River Basin Commission, and this is an appointment that's made by the county commissioners. The Kankakee River Basin Commission, if you followed the legislation in the state last year, has sort of reformalized and reorganized, and they've done a large board reduction. They've reconstituted the commission with some state funds, and that we're gonna be in study committee over the next couple of years, talking about how we're going to tame the mighty Kankakee River to where we can start pushing back on a lot of the flooding and issues that are down there. The county will also, at some point, be responsible for contributing. If you're municipal, municipality, town, or county, any political unit of government, you're gonna have to pay into this commission based off a watershed agreement, and it's a certain calculation that they have to make. And right now, the county's in the middle of trying to figure out what that dollar amount's gonna be for Porter County, and that's most of your water halfway in the county south. Anything that sheds to the Kankakee River will be, will have to pay a certain assessment. And so, along with the payment of all that, there's a lot of coming together that needs to happen down there as to how this is gonna go, what the fix is gonna be, what are the costs. So this is very early on of that, and our first position that we have to do is put a person on that board to represent Porter County in the watershed of Porter County for the Kankakee River Basin Commission. So Scott, did I miss anything on that? That's Laura, and we, at the time when this was all going down during the legislative session, we were, I don't think we were real happy, that's how it came out. We obviously voiced our opinions, and so it happened a little quick for our liking, but we're also one of the fewer counties that are sort of ahead on the stormwater program than a lot of the other counties are out there in the state, and they're all trying to catch up right now. So, so I think we had a little more knowledge than other people. So we were just, we were taken back by it, but it is what it is now, and we have to put our person on this commission to lobby and to represent the citizens of Porter County on this thing through our board. So, we need to make this appointment. So, any questions of the board, or anybody wants to talk, add about the KRBC?
I would just make a quick point of clarification. So as of July 1st, the Kankakee River Basin Commission became the Kankakee River Basin and Yellow River Basin Development Commission.
Oh wow.
So this appointment is to that. It's just the renamed, reorganized entity.
Okay. Got it. Well, I'm, I'll make the appointment. I'd like to appoint Michael Novatny, the county engineer, to sit on that board down there for us. A lot of this work is gonna be technical coming forward, and very technical. And I don't think there's anybody better in county government to represent Porter County on that board than our county engineer, Mike Novatny.
I'll gladly second that.
So we have a motion and a second for Michael Novatny to be the Porter County representative for the commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. You have our full support, Michael.
Thank you.
Go get 'em.
Yeah, we will.
Alright. Next, another MOU, and this is a memorandum of understanding between the Porter County Redevelopment Commission, Stormwater Board and Commissioners. And what this is for is the redevelopment commission, as I mentioned in the stormwater meeting this morning at 9:00, the Porter County Redevelopment Commission is going to be starting construction. Our target is this fall to build a garage up on 700 North in South Haven, and we're gonna be building a utility shed there to where we can stage snowplow trucks, and we can stage stormwater work. And we're gonna be building this building through the redevelopment commission. We already have the monies in our budgets to do this through the RDC. And so what this MOU does is allows us, the redevelopment commission, to use all of the county pricing and everything that we have with other trades, so we can utilize those cost savings when we put the groundwork in and do all that. So this just sort of allows the RDC to use all of the bids and documents and everything that we've gotten through the county, through the Highway Department, through Stormwater Department. It just allows us to use all those unit costs that are contracted.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an MOU between the Porter County Redevelopment Commission, Stormwater Board, and Commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Next up, USI Consultants, what you got, Bob?
This is for Bridge 84, which is west side of Hebron on 800 South. The supplemental agreement is due to the fact that we recently relocated a stormline that was going on the south side and then releasing the water on the north side. We have now worked with the church to keep this storm sewer totally on the south side to release it. This was per the request of residents on the north side. So with this, we're having to change our right-of-way documents slightly. This is the second supplemental agreement. Original contract was around 20,000. So now this agreement is bringing up the total contract cost for the right-of-way purchases up to 39,000 for us.
So to just give us a little more land to, we can also do some tapering and some other things too, or?
Oh, we've been working on it, so that way we can eliminate the amount of guard rail that's gonna be necessary up there. I believe we have tapered that pretty well on the north side and on the south side also.
Gotcha.
I know that wasn't an easy one to get everyone on the same page. Thanks for your persistence and patience. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for USI Consultants. This is a right-of-way supplemental agreement for Bridge 84, any amount of 39,000 dollars. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. For some of you in the audience there, as we go back and we start redoing these bridges, the last time these bridges were touched were 40, 50 years ago. So the amount of utilities that go through there now, right-of-way, there's new dimensions for slopes that you can, if you have a certain slope, you can alleviate guard rail. And so every opportunity now that we have to redo a bridge, you know, it's costing us a few more dollars to go out and buy some additional land and some other things, but this pretty much sets that bridge up for the future, for a long run, to do other things. So, you know, we're not just fixing bridges, we're out there trying to make the bridges better for future growth and future long-term. So, just wanted to make a note of that. We don't, we don't like to spend money blindly, but we think it's an investment in the future, and it gives us a much better bridge. And it also allows us to access the bridge, so now that we can maintain it, which is something that our maintenance program on our bridges is much more robust than it's been in the last three years. So now we can actually get under the bridges, we can get to them, we can mow them, a lot of things that we need to do to take care of them, so.
I think the requirements have changed too, right? We can't just replace what's there.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yep. All traffic counts have changed too. Yeah, yes. Significant areas, yes. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second. We already did it. We already did it, yep. Okay, next up, we have Stonebridge Subdivision. What do we got here?
Stonebridge Subdivision is wanting to do a secondary plat or a final plat and record it for a phase of that. And per the UDO, they have to submit a engineering estimate of the infrastructure necessary to complete the subdivision. You heard Mike talk earlier about that, so I'm gonna ask Mike to talk about the amount and everything.
Sure. So, the first, the first phase is the, of the subdivision, and for the audience and for you up front, this is Stonebridge Subdivision on 500 East, just north of US 6, about 850 North would be the north address. In order to get the final plat approved, they have to provide the county with a letter of credit or a performance bond for the remaining infrastructure yet to be installed in Phase 1. Now, the majority of the infrastructure is in, otherwise we wouldn't be at this point. These are basically miscellaneous and sort of final finish items that still need to be completed in order for Phase 1 to be fully built out in terms of its infrastructure. So remaining work include, include some grading, really re-grading of detention basins that were excavated last fall, the installation of some under-drain pipe in a ditch connecting one pond to another, sidewalk installation, and some miscellaneous ditch work and landscaping still to be completed on some individual lots. So, the major, again, the majority of the work has been done, there's miscellaneous work items still to be completed. Staff has made a significant effort throughout construction to provide almost full-time observation of the work. Frank Kalisik of our office has been out through road construction and through storm sewer installation. So we're pretty pleased with, with how the infrastructure construction process has gone.
Yeah, when we talk about most of the infrastructure's in, the estimate on the infrastructure was 615,000.
Yes.
And we're all, right now, we're almost at, well, we're almost at a half a million completed.
500, about 500,000.
Is that what the guarantee is?
The guarantee is for one, about, just under 120, 117,195 dollars.
Is that, is that individual, or is that per, is that against the LLC, per the individuals, or these personal?
These are, this is actually a letter of credit from the Monstate Bank guaranteeing it.
So it's a financial.
Are you guys, are you guys okay with 120, or whatever it is?
Yes, in fact, they originally proposed 80. We reviewed this carefully against what work still needed to be completed.
You upped it?
This is the, this is, this amount's satisfactory.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an approval of subdivision performance guarantee of Stonebridge Subdivision. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. Okay, number five, looks like we had, we...
It looks like this, basically the state would prefer that we bid North Calumet and Meridian Road as one project. We had bid it out as two separate projects.
Right.
So frankly, what we need to do here is reject the individual bids for North Calumet and Meridian, and approve rebidding of it as one project to keep in line with what the state wants for the CCMG grant.
And it's what the state requires.
State requires. When we put in the application, the application was for North Calumet Road and Meridian Road together, and then 400 North and 150 East together. The state views each one of those awards as one project, and they assign a, what they call a specific DES number, which is their tracking and project number on that. So North Calumet and Meridian Road received one DES number, and they were expecting those bids to come in together as one project.
Is the state still holding that? Are they, they holding it, the dollar that we were approved, is that still?
Correct.
Okay.
They are, and the award goes for what they were considered their fiscal year 2020. So the actual money became available on July 1st of this year. So with that, when we originally sent them the bids on it, they weren't able to give us a PO for that money on that. So once we get the new contracts under that and we send it into them, then they're gonna give us the PO to release that money for us on that.
Is the 400 North and 150 East the same deal?
It is, those are gonna be combined later, and we have until April to be able to get these in. So, 150 East is the one we're, we're working with Alpo, Alpo City Utilities right now on that. So I, and Mike and I did not really want to see that road paved until Alpo Water Works is done and out.
With all their wellheads and everything?
Correct, well, the new water main.
Yeah, all sturdy.
Yeah, and sturdy road.
Yeah, we gotta.
We have to vote to reject the bids that were, that we had opened and accepted for the North Calumet and Meridian Projects, and 400 and 150.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second for the individual projects of North Calumet, Meridian Road, 400 North, and 150 Sturdy Road, to reject the individual bids for the community crossing grant, 2019-1 projects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. And then next up?
Just the, just the notice, the advertisement or the notice in public that we will be rebidding it as one project.
Correct.
Both of those, North Calumet and Meridian, and eventually 150 and Sturdy.
Do we need to vote on that as well?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second for an advertisement that will be posted for bids for North Calumet and Meridian Road as one project. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. When is the next round of community crossing grants deadline for us to apply by?
The portal just opened up, I believe, last week for applications, and I want to say it's sometime in August. I don't...
Yeah, it's early August.
It's in early August. So I know Matt and Rich were sitting down talking about potential projects to put in for that application. On that, we do, I mean, we have a total that we can go for.
We still have like 300 and change left, right?
Correct. We have a total that we can go for of a million dollars from grants, and I think our award was 600 and some odd, like you said, and change. So we still have some money that we can go for with this application round.
Good. Any other things, guys? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, guys. Next up, we have Wildlife Management Board. This is for an agreement to provide educational presentation for the Celebrate Wildlife Festival on Saturday, October 5th in the amount of 525 dollars. This is with Incredible Bats incorporated. Incredible. Second. We have a motion and a second for an agreement with Incredible Bats to provide an educational presentation to celebrate Wildlife Festival on Saturday, October 5th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. And last up, this is for the popcorn festival. And they're asking us to do some things a little differently than they normally do. This is a request to use the courthouse, courthouse grounds beginning Wednesday, September 4th through Saturday, September 7th for the 41st Annual Popcorn Festival, along with the request to use the handicap, or, to use the lot, parking lot, behind the 157 Franklin Street Building for vendor and possibly handicap parking. In addition, they are requesting access to the building's roof to place an antenna for their two-way radios, which they use on festival day. They are also requesting the gate for the judge's parking lot to be left open on Friday, September 6th, after the courthouse is closed, so they can locate the EMT tent there for the day of the festival day. And would like to confirm that the admin garage will be open the day of the festival with a parking fee of $10 per vehicle. Lot of stuff in that little paragraph.
We've done most of it. What if, is the parking lot gonna be available behind 157?
Well, I think it's just the area that's not fenced in, it's just that lane in the back.
Do you make a motion, Jim?
A motion. We're down here. A motion to approve. We have a motion... We have a motion and a second for the Valpeyzo Community Festivals and Events as a request